Evening, everyone. Welcome to the August 8, 2022, meeting of the Council of the Town of Washington. The first thing that we have, this time I'll try to remember to do it in the proper order. First thing that we have is the approval of the agenda. Before we do that, though, I'd like to just take a quick moment to welcome our newest town council member, Drew Beard, and we are grateful to have you with us, and we look forward to your August presence.
August.
And your wisdom.
See what I can provide.
There you go. The agenda, there is one item I'd like to add under Old Business.
Do that later.
We'd like to have a motion to approve the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you.
Do we have a second?
Okay, thank you. I think I've got it from here. The addition I'd like to make is to add under Old Business B, a license for the trail to the post office, and this is for possible action. We have, are you all right with the amendment added to the motion? Brad is the second. Do you okay with the amendment?
Yes.
To the agenda? Are there any other changes to the agenda?
No.
If not, having a quorum present, a roll call vote, Patrick?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Just realized, Patrick, no one wants to be your friend tonight. You seem to be all by yourself.
You'll have Joe soon.
There we go. We'll get squared away. The next item on our agenda is the minutes from the July 11 meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I still move.
Thank you, and a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Are there any corrections or amendments or other changes? Hearing none. We have a motion and a second roll call vote to approve the minutes. Patrick?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
They are approved. All right.
I abstain, okay. You're welcome.
The mayor's report. I have gotten to regarding the post office and the lighting for the evening. I have talked to the builder several times. He had assured me that would be done on the 2nd of August. It has not been done, and we are continuing to remind him of the necessity of getting that done as quickly as possible. Contacted him again the end of last week. So we have some limited means to try to persuade him, and we are trying to use those to our best efforts to get this thing done. The only thing I will say is that there are some, as any of you know who goes shopping, things are getting hard to get these days. The supply chain and everything else that we hear about nationally and internationally, we find locally, and I'm hoping that that is the excuse that the builder has for not having the lights installed yet. In terms of the post office, the trail to the post office, which will be added to the agenda, I am thankful to the Board of Supervisors for approving a license to allow us to transverse their property with this trail that will go to the post office and allow a safe walking means by which to go from Gay Street to the post office. It will be open, the sole condition that was placed on us was that it would be open from dawn to dusk, which is certainly a very reasonable restraint. So we are pleased to have that done. Finally, I'm looking forward to receiving sometime in the very near future the report from the study that was done of a plan for the town's pedestrian means by sidewalks and trails. These are all possible, ones that might happen in the future, or in case of some of the sidewalks may never happen, but it was important for us to undergo this study. It was paid for by a grant, so there are no funds from the town were used or no significant, I don't think there are any funds from the town used for this. And as soon as I have the report, I will be sure to share it with my fellow council members and with the public. And that is all I have. Ms. Swift?
Thank you. Welcome to the new fiscal year, therefore lucky you get a nice short report. But the very good news is that the second batch of money from the ARPA funds arrived, so we have an additional $62,000. But don't anybody get excited once again because Barbara's already got it spent. The only other thing I'm working on is the zoning fees. I had hoped to have something for you to, in draft, as an update, but that didn't happen with so much going on. But Steve and I are talking, and she and Barbara, he and Barbara and I will get together within the next week or so, and hope to have an updated draft for you by September. That's it for me.
All right, thank you. Mr. Krim?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I would like to add my congratulations and welcome to your beard. And welcome forward. Make your transition as smooth as possible. You mentioned hazing. I don't think there's anything formal planned.
Oh, you'd be surprised, Martin.
I wanted to update the council with regard to the upcoming court case of Stover versus the town and others. That's going to be the week after next in Fairfax Circuit Court. Barbara away from, or a good bit of that week. Third, I wanted to let you know that I've been in communication with Rush River's attorneys with regard to several matters. One is with regard to some road borrowings that they want to do on Leggett Lane. Second item is a road maintenance agreement, which I don't believe the town has a model of, so I've asked them to come up with something. Third thing is with access easement, so each of the parcels there on one will have to have its own access easement recorded. So I'll put those back on the developer drafts for me to review. And then on the pass to the post office you've just added to the agenda, I would note that we don't have the sketch yet. I think we know what the sketch is going to look like. Council is agreeable with approving it without having the sketch in front of them. We can marry those two documents up later.
Actually, if you don't mind my interrupting, the council did see the overall sketch that was presented at the October meeting, I believe it was, and the report from Mr. Lowry. It shows the sketch.
Yeah, I didn't see anything that I would have called a sketch.
Okay. No, it's an interpretation of the term sketch, and so I always defer to lawyers when it comes to definition.
Well, it's more of an engineering issue, but if it's clear enough and we can, it has a title, a date, and a person who prepared it, then we can just fill in the blank. That's all I had, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Guyerson is unable to be here tonight, but we do have a report which was in the packet for council members and I believe is available for the public. Public Works Committee?
We, where are we at with the meters? I think we have them all installed now? No? Okay. So we're closing in on that. One of the things is to get the antenna on the top of the town hall here, so I'm arranging the mounting bracket that has to be modified for that. Hopefully, we'll get that done in the next week or so, and then schedule gentlemen from Zentner to come back in and connect it, and then we should be able to start going live with some of those readings. And they're going to be teaching Barbara the software and how to start using that. So that's coming forward. The other thing, and I'll throw it under Public Works because I think it's worthwhile. I did have a conversation with somebody from a company called ChargePoint, one of the EV charging networks that are out there. I don't have anything to share at this time, but she went through a couple of different plans that they have. One of them allows us to actually purchase the unit and have it installed. When we charge, we can do it by minute or by kilowatt hour. We can receive 90% of those funds. So it could be a little, a little bit of money, I'm not sure how much, because I don't know how many EVs would help coming through. But there's maintenance programs, everything else. I'm reaching out to Electrify America and EV Go, which are the other two big networks, and I've sent multiple emails, and I think I'm just going to have to sit on the phone until I get somebody because they don't respond. But, you know, I think the opportunity is there. Tim Tedrick is very supportive, and he's a post office supporter, so we'll just keep marching down the road with that.
Well, I appreciate your tenacity on this whole process. The other thing, if you might, I'm thinking there are a lot of people who are going up to the park and who may start running out of juice on their way back down. If there's, if they have a recommendation of a VDOT approved sign that we can have on 211 that indicates that this is a charging location?
Right, and as soon as we have something installed, essentially it gets populated to all of their online networks so that it will come up. For example, Ford was touting the Lightning, which is their F-150 EV, and I happened to go to their website, and they mentioned, you know, the largest charging network. It's not Ford's network, it's simply an amalgamation of all the charging networks across the country. And if you click on a spot on the map, it'll tell you. So off the grid is noted as a charging location, but certainly if we had something in Little Washington, again, we could probably pull some of those potential customers.
Great, great. Thank you. Planning Commission?
You, so we met on July 15, and we dealt with three subjects. They're all contained in Steve's report. One was the rezoning of the Blue House to, from rural residential, a village residential to village mixed use, and then an SUP for it to be used for accommodation attached to the inn. And the second one was an SUP for Cottage on Main Street. I think we forwarded a package of recommendations to you with some, some conditions around parking and access, but I think very straightforward conditions, and they were discussed with the applicant. And now we're suggesting that we have, hold a public hearing on the 26th of September, I believe. We hope to have it at the end of this month, but Steve's going to be away, so we couldn't do that. And we couldn't muster a quorum for the 12th of September. So I think the nearest date is September 26. Apart from that, at the meeting, we thanked our distinguished member and secretary, who's now been elevated to the town council. Two, we meet again on the 22nd of August to discuss the Rush River Commons site plan. And the solar panels, our recommendation on solar panels and on swimming pools, we passed on in to the zoning administrator in March, but it still hasn't appeared. I think it's being legaled as we speak, but it will come forward, and then it will need a public hearing.
Thank you very much. Thank you for all your work. And one important, you're still on the Planning Commission.
So I've been told.
Okay, so you were serving as liaison.
I'm serving as liaison. I don't want to lose them.
You don't want to lose each other, great. Thank you very much for the report, and thank you for all the work that you've done. Grateful.
Barbara, the, there's a document here, the zoning administration's support for special use permit request for the Blue House at 335 Main Street. Well, it says 335 Main Street. Okay, that, I understand that.
Oh, that's Steve's typo from his synopsis.
Okay, so I want to make sure that we are aware of that.
He can change that.
Right. Right, right. I just wanted to point out that. Okay.
All right. Is there a report from the Architectural Review Board? I know we have something in our materials from that, and I presume that is. Okay. All right. And they are meeting now on the third Mondays of a month, correct? Okay. So they will have their next meeting in September. The, what, 19th, something like that? Okay. All right. Tap fees.
Tap fees, one of my favorite subjects.
Okay, we'll let you go on to it.
Tap fees and sewer hookup fees have not been touched or reviewed in a very long time. The tap fees were 2009, sewer hookup fees were, I think, 15. Anyway, they're currently $5,000 for tap fees and $15,000 for sewer hookups. That's just the general, there are a lot of different breakdowns within it, but that's just the big. You know, really, if you look at it, they should probably be 10%, 20% higher. However, my recommendation is that we do a 6% increase, which is the, basically the CPI for now. And, Martin, I'll need your input on this. The water ordinance says that the town council can increase fees by resolution. However, the sewer ordinance says that, I mean, it's all part of the ordinance, there's nothing in there. I would like to just have everything straight and streamlined and have everything per amendment to the ordinance.
Yes.
Is that good? Okay. Now that I've got the okay on that, what I'd like to do is, and I've talked to the mayor and the vice mayor about these, is then work with Martin and get a draft amendment to each of the ordinances, they have to be separate, which could be presented to the rest of the council at the September meeting. And then if we're all in agreement without a formal vote, but in agreement, we can then set a public hearing for October. And then moving forward and built into the ordinance should be a trigger of once a year reviewing and adjusting the fees by the CPI.
So you're using the CPI as a benchmark?
I think CPI is a good benchmark. That's what you and I have talked about, and Joe and I.
The CPI is the consumer price index, 100%. Okay.
Mayor, may I add something? There are specialty CPIs that don't, CPIU is just for all products. There are also ones for construction and other particular social.
Oh, good.
Other categories, you might check the Department of Labor's pay specifically for utility.
Wonderful, thank you.
All right, is that it?
That's it.
All right. We have the license for the trail to the post office, thanks to the efforts of Mr. Krim. Actually, Mr. Krim, do you mind kind of introducing this a little bit and the endeavors that you went through?
So the original idea was for an easement that would be located on the county property and sit there, you know, forever. And the first problem we ran into is that the county doesn't have its final plans yet for future construction. So that meant that, you know, we were trying to have some language that would have their ability to move the trail at any time. And ultimately, what the county came back to us with was they don't really like the permanence of an easement, they want to have a license, so there's something that is eminently terminable, so that they, you know, if they want to terminate it, it's not so much fuss and bother as it would be with terminating. So that's essentially what we came up with there. The other features of it remain pretty similar to the draft easement. We're basically going to, you know, put it on the ground, and that's where it's going to be. It's going to be Alst Trail. A couple of other non-permanence surfaces are permanent. Trail. And the town will indemnify the county for any claims or injury against the county on the property, which is something that, this is the rare instance where a local government can indemnify anybody. That's what they ask for, and that's what we provide. And I've seen that feature in other recreational trails.
The important, if I can add to it, the county is narrowing in on a plan to build the new courthouse, to build a new courthouse in the area directly behind where the county administrator's office used to be on Gay Street. And so one of the concerns that they had was, is this going to impair their construction? And Mr. Krim noted it, but I wanted to give a little further detail. Our desire with this trail is to provide a means for people in the town and in the general community to be able to have a recreational trail and also a means by which to walk to the post office. I think our long-term intent would be to try to have a sidewalk that goes down Warren Avenue, but the way that that process works, that would take a number of years before that is constructed. And so, once the courthouse is built, the indication I have from the county, and again, I'm supposing here, but I think they are going to incorporate it within their walkways around the courthouse, so that the trail will still be able to go, but part of it will be going over hard surfaces of walkways and sidewalks that are part of the county courthouse structure. So with that, we have the, County Board of Supervisors has approved the license that you have in front of you, and it is for us to go ahead and also to approve it. I would like to go ahead and make a motion to do so. And Mr. Krim, it has your blessing?
It does, sir, yes.
Great. So I make a motion and would look for a second?
A second?
A second question?
Yes. Is there any signage that'll go up guarding, you know, using this at your risk?
Yes, yes. All that signage will go up as well as a dawn to dusk.
If I'm not mistaken, it'll be very similar to what's in Sperryville at their trail.
It will have that same information. It'll have that same information. So, all right, we are voting on the license for the trail. Any other questions? Not, we have a motion and a second, roll call vote to approve?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
I abstain.
I apologize for my late arrival.
That's all right, we're glad to have you here. Your timing is impeccable. All right. New business, we have the recommendations from the Planning Commission. At this point, what we will need to do is to schedule a meeting, or, I'm sorry, we have to schedule advertising for this special use permit. And to have that meeting, right now, we're setting it for September 26, I believe you said. And I wish we could do it sooner, but unfortunately, summer vacations and the whole manner of things have made it impossible. And I apologize to the applicant that we're not going to be able to do it until the 26th. But the idea would be that we would be advertising to have a special meeting on the 26th, and I presume it will be a joint meeting with the Planning Commission, at which, it will be a joint public hearing, sorry, with the Planning Commission on the 26th. Would, I will go ahead and make a motion to approve advertising for a joint public hearing on September 26 with the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Mayor, and that's for both of the special use permits and the rezoning?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the clarification. For, so it would be both for the special use permit and for the rezonings. Okay. All right, well, then I would like to change my motion so that the wording says rezoning before it says special use permit. All right, is there a second to that motion, convoluted as it may be?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right. Oh. September 26?
No. I'm going to be in Spain, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I should be, I don't.
Two, three?
Yeah.
Okay. Looks like we'll have a quorum for the 26th.
Gene will probably, should be back.
Okay. That's all right, I appreciate everyone's input. This is a, this is a meeting that, what is the old saying about a childhood raised by a village, a meeting is done by a whole group. So we have a motion, we have a second, we have any other questions or clarifications? If not, a roll call vote. Mr. O'Connell is recusing himself from that vote. Mr. Whitehead?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. All right. Then we will have that public hearing, public meeting on the 26th of September. All right, I now open it up to the public for any thoughts or comments. As always, please identify, go up to the microphone, identify yourself, and if you're a resident of the town, thank you.
Drew, congratulations, I think.
Thank you.
How long do you get to say abstain?
Only this meeting.
Okay. Two, two quick things. I'm Robert Fass, the general manager of the Inn at Little Washington, not a county resident, but I am responsible for the inn. When you're, I just would like to mention, when you're considering the tap fees and sewer fee increases, just like the zoning fees, I think perhaps there's consideration to someone who's doing perpetual revenue generating expansions to maybe have some consideration to that. So think about, think about that when you're applying these increases. And secondly, I wanted to talk about, a couple of weeks ago, there was a water issue replacing the meters, we broke something, water was shut down. Luckily and thankfully, everyone hurried and fixed it, water resumed pretty quickly. However, if they couldn't get it back, it would be very problematic for our business. That's some, that's a service we pay for quite a bit of money. So I know there's been talk about in the past about the well capacity or these valves or some consideration. I just bring it up again as that's a, we can't operate without water, and I'm sure people's homes would be problematic if that shut down for a week or something. So just a thought, it was, we're very lucky that they got it back and going, but it would be problematic. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that, that request. We have met with various officials to try to figure out some means for funding for that. And so we are, it is a high priority. I will admit, it's not the highest priority right now, but it is. I will admit, it's not the highest priority right now, but it is a high priority for us.
Just in the, also as part of the recapitalization effort that's underway is also making sure that all the isolation valves in town work, which turned out to be a problem last summer, so that we can minimize the impact to residents and businesses by shutting down individual parts of the system, access for everybody else. So very aware of the potential impacts.
One of the things that came out of that is that we do have residences that don't have shut-off valves, and that's what constitutes that problem, is that house couldn't be isolated from the main line, and that's just historical situation. Part of what we want to do in revamping everything along with all these meters is to put in those shut-off valves. In that particular case, that house now has a shut-off valve. It can be isolated from the main line. So if there is a problem going forward, it won't affect anything else. That's not to say that we're not going to find someplace else. That's going to happen, and we're going to have to shut things down. This is an old system. It was done by, you know, hook and crook, and it's not well documented, and a lot of people have had their hands on it. And that's why, you know, spending a lot of time trying to resolve this, trying to put this system together, it'll serve us for another 50 years or more, and that's going to be a lot of changes. Things are going to get dug up, and issues are going to be found, so, but we'll get there. We'll get there.
And one last comment. Mr. Fast, I always appreciate the gentle nudges from you to make sure that we keep this at the forefront.
I will say that it's terrible to have shut-off valves at every resident by the time we're done walking there, so we haven't any more than I know of. And it will require portions of the street to be shut off in order for the shut-off valves to be installed to communicate that with the affected residents.
An atrium has been doing an excellent job. They are quick in jumping on things and solving problems.
We have sufficient capacity.
Yeah. Not a problem.
Yeah. One of the, one of the longer range things is the state is asking or requiring us to have another well. So that's one of the things that's on our to-do list, sourcing some money for that. The current well, the testing's been done, doesn't show any issues that we're going to suddenly run out of water. But, you know, hydrology is a funny thing, and suddenly we may see, you know, water getting restricted. Fortunately, we're getting good rains. The aquifer is strong. We should be in good shape. And the next big thing is from the, from the well to the water tower, that part of the infrastructure's got to get redesigned and corrected and improved because right now it's not, it's not operating the way it should in an ideal situation. But, you know, if, for example, the pump house were to go out, the tower's big enough and holds enough water that we should be able to run the town for quite a period before, you know, things got critical.
There's one thing that you said I just want to get a clarification. The state requires that our town have two wells. We do have two wells, but the likelihood is that they're working off the same aquifer.
Right. The two wells are simply 15 feet apart. That's not what they want, so.
So we do have a second well.
Technically, we have a second well, yes.
But we are also realizing that it was for the best interest of the entire community that we get a third well in a location some distance away from the other two.
Exactly. It may tap into a different part of the aquifer shape.
Ms. Anse, you've been very patient. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I just had a question for the town attorney. Perhaps I'm the only person in the room who doesn't know this, but could you give us a bit of background on the court case you said was coming up in Fairfax County Courthouse, Dover versus the town of Washington?
It's a slip and fall case. Slip and fall case at the.
White Moose Inn.
Want to say it again?
White Moose Inn.
White Moose Inn, and there's an allegation that there was a defective hurt there. Sued everybody, the inn, town, the several different defendants.
Right. I thought the town was excused as a defendant.
It's been pending for.
More than that.
Longer than that. Three years. Yeah, almost three.
If there was.
Oh, there was. I won't make any search in one way or another.
Not, not saying there was.
I'll give you a full report after the, the, next month after the trial occurs, but being handled by insurance counsel.
Great. Thank you. Does that answer?
Yes.
Because more of us are happy to. All right. Any other comments from the public? Then I will close the public forum. Seeing nothing else on our agenda, I ask for a motion to adjourn.
I so move.
Thank you. A second?
Second?
Thank you. Roll call vote to adjourn?
Yes.
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 I have to do it again. Abstain. I don't.
You're, you can, you can vote to adjourn.
Oh, I can say yes.
Yeah, you can say yes to that.
I thought I was supposed to abstaining.
You can stay here by yourself, Drew.
It's, it's going to take me a while, guys, but I'll get there. I'll get there. My vote is yes. Yeah, I have dinner to get to.